Good evening. It's time to call to order the Guthrie Public Schools Board of Education. Regular monthly meeting, March 11th, 2019. Roll call please.
Davis, present.
Watts.
Present.
Smedley.
Here.
Harrison.
Present.
Flag.
Here.
Bennett Johnson.
Here.
Saleet.
Here.
Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we begin this meeting, let us pause for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, Agenda Item 6, presentation by Mr. Brian Billings from Sonic of East Guthrie.
This is an annual event, and we always welcome Mr. Billings to the board meeting. He has a presentation for one of our school sites.
Hello, everyone. We've done seven years of everybody getting each school getting $7,000 yet. We need to start all over again. There's been another seven years. It seems like the first seven went pretty quick, and hopefully this one will be as quick. To the Guthrie junior and I, $7,000 donation. Congratulations. Don't forget that for teacher appreciation, we'll get all the year-end for the teachers this year, fax it in whatever you can, you want. Bring it in. Fax your cards in. Don't do it. Fax them in, we'll each fix it up. You should appreciate it, everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ryan, we really sincerely thank you for your support and really appreciate all you do because we know, most of us know, that you do so much more than even this. And it's truly appreciated by everybody in the district. Thank you so much. It was wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay, Agenda Item 7 is the student recognition. Mr. Wemsey from Foundation Insurance is here tonight to have a Student of the Month recognition.
Guys, I'm Blake Wooton, Foundation Insurance, and I'm here to help honor our March Guthrie Public Schools Student of the Month, which is Mr. Jesse Sepetta. Did I say that right?
Right.
Okay. And I usually read to you guys the application, but this month I'm going to let Ms. Sawyer go ahead and read what she wrote in honor of Jesse.
Okay. Try not to cry here. Jesse is a one-of-a-kind student that many of us do not get the opportunity to even meet in our lifetime, let alone get to work with. Jesse is a senior in a 10th school at Guthrie Upper Elementary. At first glance to see Jesse is to see a young man in a wheelchair that does not use speech to communicate his wants and needs. However, Jesse has a way of communicating with his eyes, facial expressions, award-winning smile, and he is even learning to use a speech device. At second glance, you can see that Jesse has a greater challenge with movement of his muscles because they don't always work the way that they were intended to. He can see that his muscles work differently, so he is always willing to find a workaround or another avenue to get things done. However, it's at third glance that you can really see the true Jesse. He is a young man that waits patiently on others around him to help meet his basic needs. He never gets angry, he never gets agitated, and he is never impatient, ever. He understands that his abilities are oftentimes limited, but he recognizes that there are others around him that need even more help than he does. In addition to his patience, Jesse has the greatest determination of any individual I have ever met. He is always willing to try his absolute best at whatever challenge he faces. Jesse has been recently entering a regular registration classroom in the afternoon, and he teaches his peers more than they teach him. He's teaching them how to be patient, how to work hard, and how to be self-determined. It is with a joy that I get to present, or we get to present Jesse as the Student of the Month for this year, or for this month, and I wanted to especially recognize his mom and his sister who do an amazing job with making sure he has everything that's needed for him in his daily classroom. So, congratulations, Jesse.
For the nomination, that's a pretty special one, and I know you nominated him for patience, but I heard a lot of those keywords in there that we're looking for. So, good job, Jesse, on being Student of the Month. And we have a $60 gift card to Walmart this month, that's a basic place, so make mom buy you something fun, okay? For you guys, okay?
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
First, just, first, Chris.
Got it.
Thank you.
So, Agenda Item 8 is comments to the board by citizens registered to speak to the board.
We had none.
Any comments by board members to the board? No? Okay, Agenda Item 9 is the superintendent's report.
Tonight, we will, since our last board meeting, the state report cards have been released. We have that as an agenda item, and I'll reserve my comments for the report card for that agenda item. We've had an additional three inclement weather days since our last board meeting. Because of the hours built into our schedule, we will not have to add days to the end of our instructional calendar at this time, but we're getting close. So, winter needs to end for a lot of reasons. Students from Mrs. Pratt's Gifted and Talented Program at Guthrie Upper Elementary School participated in the Oklahoma Inventors Exposition. Placing first was Noah Trats with a sixth-grade competition with the Retainer Bright. The third-place winner in the fifth-grade competition was Jace Rainwater with a miniature microwave for a lunchbox. No word on whether or not Dad is using that. Molly Throckmorton received honorable mention in the Adjustable Dog Hall. Other good news, our Guthrie High School wrestling team was the 5A Academic State Champions with a 3.63 GPA. They were honored at the State Wrestling Championship and also honored at the State Capitol on the floor of the House and the Senate by Representative Mize and by Senator Hall. The next item, public forums for the upcoming bond election will be held on Tuesday, March 26th at the Community Church and Thursday, March 28th at the Logan County Fairgrounds, Education Building. Both forums will begin at 6:30, and they are sponsored by the Guthrie Chamber of Commerce. And the final item, thoughts and prayers go out to Conewalk Public Schools as they lost a student over the weekend in a bus accident. I am personal friends with their superintendent. I reached out on behalf of Guthrie Public Schools that day and offered our condolences and also offered any assistance we could provide and said, unfortunately, we've been through some of that. And so, just keep Conewalk in prayer. And that's my report for the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Simpson. Agenda Item 10 is the presentation of the 2017-2018 site report cards by Ms. Carmen Walters, Executive Director of Federal Programs in Elementary Education, and Mr. Doug Ogul, Assistant
Given the chance tonight to present our site report cards, the first thing that I would like to say is several of the administrators in front of me have a chance this summer and this fall to go to several workshops that the State Department put on to learn how to figure these report cards. So, if you see a few of their faces, a little bit of frustration was that the report card changed from some of these presentations, but we went to how to figure the report card. One of the big issues was the State Department went to a bell curve, and so there was automatically going to be so many As and so many Fs, and that was never told to us when we went to any of the workshops. And so, anyway, I wanted to make sure that everybody knew that going forward. So, Guthrie High School report card, there's several indicators that are similar towards sites, but for the high school, there's some that are particular, and so we'll go over these. First indicator is academic achievement. This is the ACT that the students take for their standardized test. And so, as a school, you can see that we were 48 percent. The state was a 52 percent. If you look at our 5A averages, we were right there, and that equation broke down to a C. If you look at the English Language Proficiency Progress, this is something with our ELL students. We did a really good job of growing those students. We spent a lot of money that's come from the federal government to help that, and Mr. Legrand and his staff have done a great job of gaining some momentum with those students and receiving a B in that. The one that we've heard a lot about is graduation, so I want to talk a lot about that. We did receive an F. We had 73 percent of our students in the cohort group that graduated in four or five years. The cohort group is the group that after they finish eighth grade year, they become a group, and they have to graduate in that four or five years. There's only three ways you can get out of the cohort group. One is be deceased, two, be incarcerated, or three, transfer to another credited university or public school. And so, we look back at the last 10 years of data, and our cohort graduation rate has been right at 79 to 80 percent, which if you look, an 80 percent is a D. And so, a lot of people looked at the graduation rate and said, we have an F. Well, 73 percent of our kids in that cohort graduated in the four years or that extra year if some of those needed it. If you remember back to the fall, if we can get them as seniors, 96 percent of our seniors that start in August graduate on time. And so, it's a little misleading there with that graduation rate. We do know there's some work that needs to be done, and so Mr. Legrand and his administrative staff and his leadership team, I know they're going to be meeting and trying to figure a way to get these kids to graduate and get that cohort rate up a little bit. One of the issues that we found is there's a large number of homeschool kids in this graduation that don't meet that three criteria that we talked about. And so, when they're homeschooled after they leave the junior high, anytime during that senior year, they're considered dropouts. And so, it's something we know that we need to address and need to work on, but we did want to highlight some of the things that came on that graduation portion. Chronic absenteeism, the high school was 84 percent. As you can see, this is a D. This is part of the frustrations, as you probably look at some of their faces. This was one that when we went, it was calculated, if you had an 84 percent, it was going to be 8.4 points out of 10. To get to the bell curve, they moved that and had a formula, and so the chronic absenteeism is a D. I'm not going to get into the formula part of it, but something that we do need to work on. The report card from two years ago used to use our average daily membership. Now, chronic absenteeism is figured that every kid has to be at school 90 percent of the time throughout the whole school year, so basically they could miss 18 times. Is that correct?
Yeah.
None of that, 19th, they become chronic absenteeism student. So, we have looked at what some of the other schools that are doing that are in our class of 5A, found some ideas and some maybe some cogging ways that we may be able to address some of this. But at the same time, we urge, you know, our parents to get our, help us and get our kids to school because it does help us on our report card. Post-secondary opportunities, another indicator. We had 38 percent of our juniors and seniors that participated in either concurrent classes, AP classes, or certification classes. And so, I think that's a pretty high number. We had, looking at some other schools, we had some schools that were comparable to us, that were even college towns that had a D, had less than that. So, we're still going to encourage and look for other opportunities to help our students to meet that, but, you know, I think 38 percent of those juniors and seniors getting those post-secondary opportunities is pretty good, but we'll continue to look for ways to grow those opportunities. An overall grade, what's a C? When we looked at, you'll see the comparisons after I drew the junior high, the high school and the junior high 5A comps, is it four right there in the middle? One thing that I hate is, I hate that our students, because of the bell curve, this report card could have been altered a little bit, especially some of the indicators that we have. So, any questions over the high school before I move to the junior high?
Back on the absenteeism, the chronic absenteeism, you said 18 absences. Is that unexcused absences?
Any absence.
Any absence.
Yeah. Even if it's- School activity.
Except the school activity?
That's right.
Any school activity. It doesn't have to be a state or national level?
No.
Okay.
School activities, no. If there is a report that we can, if there's any type of medical exemption, that's a new thing that they did add, and so if we have a kid that's maybe out for some type of chronic illness, and we can go in and fill in in that report, that's a new report that they have started this year.
Good question. So, the absenteeism, how much is it tardy? Is that a big component of this, or is it just-
Three tardies equals an absence, if I-
So, how much-
No, no, yeah.
No, we don't, we don't do that.
For that reason. For that reason, right there.
What's one?
It used to be three tardies equals an absence, and I don't want to get those tardies to equal a kid's absence because it's going to be held against them.
Okay, so, very interesting.
We still give them discipline and consequences for tardies, but we just don't count it as an absence.
Yeah, so 18 absences, they missed the entire day. They missed the entire day if they were absent then. All right, so what if they missed first hour, and then they show up for second hour?
It's the percentage of the day, is what they pull it from the student database, and I think it has to be more than four periods a day being certain absence for that out of the sale. So, just first hour is not going to count the answer.
Okay.
Good questions. Anything else from the high school? The junior high, indicators are a little bit different, but there's some that are similar. Academic achievement from the fall, when we talked, Mr. Rainwater, his administrative staff, his teachers, they were above the state average, or at the state above average in every subject. They received a 65 percent. You can see the state average was a 52 percent, and that was a B. You know, to me, if you're above the state average in all those, and you're just getting a B, and we're way above it, there's a little bit of issues. I know Robbie will argue that one too, and say that when we start looking at some of the other schools, we were above them in all these categories, and their score was a little bit better. And so, that's some of the questions that we have asked to try to figure out, but then it goes back to that bell curve, is they only want so many As, they only want so many Fs, and so we're all kind of clumped in there in the middle. You'll see that there's no grade for the English Language Proficiency Progress with the junior high. They did not have enough students that met that criteria, and so they will not receive a grade. So, out of a 90-point scale, they go to a 75-point scale. Academic growth was a C. Another issue that we have, that we've asked our accreditation officer for, so a little explanation, is we were at 60 percent, as you can see, as a school, and the state was a 50 percent. So, we're above the state average, and we're getting a C. And so, frustrated, may not be the right word to say, but, you know, it's one of the things that we're looking at. We're going to try to figure out exactly, you know, some of those kids and how they're figuring that. And so, not going to get into that too much, but to have a C on that. Chronic absenteeism, you can see that the junior high was at 88 percent. State average was 87 percent. So, again, we're above the state average, but we get a C. And so, a little frustrating that when you're above the state average and you still get a C, and 88 percent of our kids come to class on time.
Doug?
Yes?
The thing that sticks out when you compare the high school and the junior high, obviously is academic achievement. That's the one that's, there's a big gap there. Why is that? What do you attribute that to?
Well, some of that is, the high school now is ACT, and so it's a national test. Some of that is, they're not getting tested now at the high school level until they're juniors, so they're not getting tested now as freshmen and sophomore. And to be honest, I think the system that the junior high, Mr. Rainwater's put in has been very successful. They have figured a way that what they do works, and I think Mr. Legrand and his staff now are trying to figure out what we can do to help that with the ACT. We've already talked about, how can we have an ACT prep class? What can we do to make that work? Because we know that now that's their grade, that's their report card. And so, we're looking at how can we make that part of their curriculum, maybe? And so, those are some of the talks that we've already started having, is we think those kids need that. I know my stepson, you know, we had to pay out of our pockets to send to an ACT prep class. And so, you know, those are the things that we're looking at. Does that kind of help, Ron?
There's another element to that as well. Keep in mind that the junior high has two years where they are not issuing credit. And so, it's not as if they're having to reach the low level. Students are having to per se retake classes. But when that turns to that ninth grade year, you have four years to graduate, and the students that are of the lowest level are not, if they're not getting those credits, that piles up and has a, has a sort of a snowball effect on that student population too. And so, that's why it's hard to measure those apples to apples because of that condition.
One thing too, I want to point out is that the ACT is a timed test, and up until this point, they've been given unlimited time. All the other tests that they take in elementary and at the junior high are untimed. And so, that's one reason that we're having, we're giving sophomores the pre-ACT, just so they can be exposed. Of course, we encourage them to take the ACT more than one time, and it's like anything, the more you practice, the better you become. Unfortunately, a lot of our students, the first time they ever see the ACT is their junior year, when it's offered for free by the state, and I understand that, but part of that is we're trying to get, have our teachers give time to ask that the students are accustomed to that, because through elementary, junior high, it's unlimited, but the ACT's actually, like the math, is 60 questions in 60 minutes. And there are some of them just aren't accustomed to that, unfortunately.
So, is this academic achievement at the high school, is that based just on the junior ACT, or is that-
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So, majority of the times, that's their first time to take it. Does it change if they take it again as a senior and they raise their score?
Well, it doesn't affect the-
It doesn't affect this.
It doesn't affect the achievement.
So, this is based solely on juniors taking the ACT?
That's correct.
And the important component there is if they haven't gotten an upper-level science, if they haven't achieved an upper-level science and math credit, it's very hard to have a good score on the ACT. And that was kind of what I was leading to.
So, academic achievement's based on just the ACT score?
Yeah, and-
So, what, you know, how does that discourage the district from? I think we ought to encourage students to take the ACT path or career tech. So, it seemed like there would be an incentive not to push kids into the career tech if you're measuring your academic performance based on the ACT. So, how do you compare our student body population with maybe an admin or, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we obviously don't have as many that are on that, that realistically are going to college. I mean, if you ask them, are you going to college? 80 percent of them will tell you they're going to college, but when push comes to shove, you look at the data, it's closer to 30 percent. So, that's just not, I mean, our clientele's more to the career path, which is fine.
So, I mean, nearly half, well, over a third of our array is tied to the ACT, which is not a career tech type path. So, on the one hand, you want to encourage your students to pursue a career tech path if they don't go to college, but then on the other hand, they may be penalized on academic achievement.
Yeah, that's true.
It's interesting.
And that ACT, and if you remember back in the fall, I think it's important to point out that it's, that's based on the benchmark in ACT. In order to be successful in college, they want you to reach this certain benchmark on the ACT, and so that's why they're coming up with those numbers, is the number of students that are ahead or above this benchmark levels.
As I dove into this, the thing that stuck out to me the most was the academic achievement array. You know, I've said, and you guys have heard me say this every year since the report card started, that it's a great measure of socioeconomic status of your student population. That's, that's most visible in the academic achievement. And when you look and compare that segment of this report card among other schools, it's very obvious. And it's, I think it goes back to, it's hard to take that out and say you're going to have a report card and not have that element of socioeconomic status of your student population.
What is the junior high's academic achievement based on?
Their state test. ELA, science, and math. And-
Just those three. And that's just in eighth grade?
Seventh and eighth.
Seventh.
Eighth grade of science, not seventh grade of science.
Okay.
Doug, what's the first opportunity that these kids who reach the ninth grade have exposure to the thought process they've put in their minds to take the ACT? I mean, I know we're talking about maybe have a prep class, and when does the seeds get planted?
That's a good question. I don't know that I have an answer for that. I can tell you that starting next year, the ICAP is getting ready to be out. We'll have a board conversation about that. And that's a new state initiative to get kids college and career ready, whether that is at a career tech or on to college. Get those conversations started early. And so, that's going to be a component of that ICAP, but to say a specific time when we start talking about that, I can't answer that.
You know, you might listen to the ACT Explorer has been part of the program for years, last couple of years we got away from, we took it again this year, and those kids get a breakdown of what they missed and how they would score in comparison to what they're going to score in, when they take the ACT, it doesn't interest them at all. So, that's talked about through the guy's house and man taking that ACT Explorer.
So, who at the State Department, which I assume that's where this all comes from, comes up with this, how's that figure? Who puts up these brainstorm ideas on the bell curve?
Can you answer that question? I have a lot of smart people that were not in the school business, but in the mathematical work to get that bell curve to come through that way. Before I flip this slide here, I just wanted to point out, you can see that we were above the state average in all these categories, and so when you go to the overall junior high grade, where 61 percent, the state was a 55, and that's a C. And so, I'm not going to turn around and look at Mr. Rainwater, I know he's got steam coming out of his ears. He missed a B by four tenths of a point, and so that's some of the stuff that we have a hard time swallowing when we were above the state average in all those other areas, but we still become a C. And so, I know that's frustrating to a staff for all the stuff that initiatives that they have, they get above the stuff, and then they still get a C. And so, anyway, I do want to commend Mr. Rainwater and his staff, you know, not a true reflection of the grade, and so the same with the high school and some of the stuff that they did as well with their post-secondary and working with this ELL students. So, that gets me to the last thing. I'm not going to go over all these. Those are the- Those are the five A comps. And so, what I did was, the first thirty-two schools are six A. I took the next thirty-two, which are five A ADM comps. And so, those are schools that are close to us in size. A lot of those are socio-economically the same. And so, if you could look down to the very bottom, it says the high school breakdown, there was zero As, six Bs, fifteen Cs, nine Ds, and zero Fs. If you count, that was thirty schools. There was not a score for Santa Fe South. And then, there was one private school, Bishop Kelly. And so, that can show you where that bell curve is. You know, we have thirty schools and there's no As, you know, there's no Fs. It just shows where, you know, everything went in with that bell curve. Junior high breakdown was a little bit harder to figure. Some of the inner-city schools, you had to really know and dig in to see if there was a middle school tied to them. I did the best that I could. There were zero As, six Bs, eleven Cs, eight Ds, and two Fs with the junior high breakdown that I was able to pull scores from. So, that gets me, is there any more questions on the secondary report card?
I'll reserve my comments until you think you have a first part of the question.
Well, I'm going to go sit down and turn it over to this folks.
All right, we're going to switch to elementary gear. Okay, we're going to start with Gess. And I will say, initially, when I saw this, I was very pleased. I know a lot of the initiative that Ms. Davidson and her staff have done, and I think that we're finally starting to see some of the fruits of the labor kind of kicking in here. Academic achievement, you can see that we're at a forty-three, the state's at a fifty-two, but I really wanted to look at that academic growth. We preach when we preach as a district that we don't have a lot of control of how these kids come to us. Wherever their learning curve is, that's how they come to us. So, if we can grow them, that is our goal. And when you look at the state average of growing academically, and it's fifty percent, and we're growing sixty-two percent, twelve percent above the state average, what we're doing is working. And so, this has taken some years to get going, but what they're doing, what the theater elementary schools are doing to get there, I'm very proud of that. So, I wanted to commend Ms. Davidson and her staff and also the other elementary schools because they feed into that as well. So, that was a fantastic job. And the English language proficiency, just like we talked about, really close. You've got thirty-two percent for Gess, and then the state average is thirty-three percent. We keep talking about, we keep adding with the English learners. We're starting, those numbers keep going up. And we've put a lot of money into translation services and other things that can help us, and that is starting to pay off. We're utilizing that and we're getting a lot of things. And you'll hear me talk as we go through, we've already met as elementary principals, we've even met today. We have a way on all their school report cards. I can go in and we can click on English language proficiency, and I can see every kid that's on there. How many years they need to make their goal, and I can print that, and we already have those, and we have figured out. The principals are actually bringing them tomorrow. Basically, if they're not at their school site, what elementary site are they at? And then, their ELABS, which are basically like their English learner, kind of like IEPs where we help track them and help them with their progress. We're pulling all of those. We're going to indicate that they were on the school report card, they did not meet their academic growth. And then, we're going to get their parents in here, we're going to use the translation services that we have, and we're going to get that going. We're going to do the same thing for chronic absenteeism, very, very close to the state average. You can see we're at eighty-three percent, they're at eighty-six percent. I can do the same thing. We can go in, we can click on that, all of the kids and their absences. And not only, you know, one more meeting with them to bring it to their attention that they are chronically absent, according to the state of Oklahoma, but also it is an initiative with our district attorney and also with compulsory school act, you have to be in school. And so, we're going to work with those families, but that needs to be brought to their attention on how we can work on this. And so, those are things that we have in place. Any questions on Gess? Okay. Overall grade, forty-seven percent. State average is fifty-five percent. And I guess it's a total grade of A, C for Gess. Moving on to Fogory. When we get to Fogory, Conroe, and Central, it's a little bit confusing because you don't have growth to measure. Third grade is the first year that they take a test. And so, when you see academic growth for Fogory and it says NA, well, they don't, they didn't take a test before third grade, so you have no growth comparison to compare that to. When you look at their academic achievement, that is their math and reading, twenty-one percent. Yeah, we want that a little bit higher. We talked about their first-year test takers. And again, we do the same thing with those. That twenty-one percent, we go in, we click on those kids, okay? Figure what they scored, how many points are they to get to the next level that they need to be, what school are they at? And we have that information. This part of the school report card is helpful because you can go in and have those conversations. So, the principals are digging deep. And I think, you know, we talked for the longest time, you know, some of the, when we were at grade center, it really didn't kind of hit home to maybe some of the teachers and staff that were second grade and below because they didn't really, really deal with it. And now, with going in, looking at all this stuff, they're really starting to kind of be a little more part of the whole plan and kind of see things. And so, it's nice to see everyone, and obviously, the more hands-on they have, the better. So, we're starting to see a better overall, kind of buy-in on that. So, again, no academic growth. English language proficiency, you're going to see lower numbers for these lower grades because they haven't had really enough time to get improved yet. Some of them have just been put on there, or some of them have only had one year. And so, you're not going to see a huge percentage in that area, and that's why you see the F in that area for Fogory. They had a lot coming in and not enough time to really get that growth on them. And so, the state average is thirty-three, we're at sixteen. Again, chronic absenteeism, we're right there with the state average for Fogory. I think we're eighty-six point four-three and they're point five-one. Fogory overall grade, really don't have one because basically, we don't have the growth mechanism. They can't receive a report card because the growth mechanism is a part of that. And so, they don't have either the seventy-point, seventy-five point scale or the ninety point scale. Have to have that growth in there. Any questions on Fogory?
Can you speak about a program to go in and click and know where the kids? Is this a new program that we're just implementing?
No, it's always been on any type of state testing. And you can go in and on any of the report cards, you can go in and see the achievement of what subgroups or what groups. You've always had the ability to kind of be able to go in and do that. Good question. Okay, moving on to Central. A couple of NAs there. Academic achievement, they were first grade, so they don't take any of the state tests. Again, no academic growth. They didn't take a test from kindergarten, so nothing to compare it to. Extremely with Central because the first time they could have even been identified as an English language proficiency student would be in kindergarten. That's the first time they could take the WEDA test, which is that English language instruction test. And so, you're going to see a smaller percentage there because they're just being identified in that. So, they're at fifteen percent. State average is thirty-three percent. I will say, kudos to Central. They are higher than the state average on chronic absenteeism. They are at eighty-seven, the state is at eighty-six. And I think Mrs. Watson can tell you that we were talking today and we were clicking on those very real kids and getting out some things and figuring out what school that they were at. So, again, kudos to you on that absenteeism. I'm with Mr. Ogilvy on that. Don't necessarily agree with a lot of that, but I think all of our initiatives that we have and now have any ability to go in there, I think it's going to hit home. I mean, you're, when it's a district attorney initiative, when it's a state law, and then, I'm sorry that your state, you know, you've been reported that your child is chronically absent according to the state of Oklahoma. I don't know what else needs to be said at that point. Questions on Central?
So, all these sites, we can't really compare this to next year because this is...
Yeah, this will look much different this year if you'll be able to track the growth.
It'll look just like Gess's next year. And so, it'll be, make much more sense.
It just, with the great centers, the way we work, it just didn't fit the model that the state had for reporting this.
Again, Central doesn't have an overall grade. They don't have the pieces to the component to get that. Any questions on anything with Central? Okay, Conroe, again, you're not going to have any growth or achievement. They did not have any English language. People that were there, and if they did, they were their first year, and they wouldn't have been identified until that first grade year and shown up on what would have been Danny's. Chronic absenteeism, you got eighty-one percent compared to eighty-six percent. Mr. Rainwater and I talked a lot about that, is some of the younger grades, sometimes mentality is, does my child have to be here every day for kindergarten? Does my child have to be here every day? And yes, they do. And so, I think that this kind of helps kind of plug that in. And I guarantee you, those elementary principals know those kids, how many days they missed, and I guarantee you, they know that, yeah. Any questions on anything with Conroe that, that's why you have that lower number because they think it's just, oh, they're just in kindergarten, it's okay, and, you know? That's kind of what you end with. So, again, no overall grade for Conroe on that one. It was a little bit harder getting comparisons with Gess because there's not a lot of fourth, fifth, and sixth grade centers. But I was able to pull a couple that were either fourth and fifth or fifth and sixth grade. And of that comparison, there were none of them that had As. You had two schools that had Bs, and that was at Deer Creek Intermediate and Piedmont. You had seven schools that had Cs. We were one of the seven. El Reno, Coeita, Durant, McAllister, Noble, and Ada. And then, you had two Ds, which were Diamond and Woodward. And then, no Fs. Again, there's that bell curve with the no As and no Fs. And so, I know I was working with Ms. Con today, and we were going in, and we were looking at some things, and we were just looking for the, just a simple skill of what you needed. And I said, well, no, you can't do that. And so, then we pulled up, and there was this math formula, and she said, you have to do this formula to get to this? And I said, yes. And there was like tabs and instructions on how to do that. And so, it's a little different this year, but we're still working hard. We know it, we're on it, and I think we'll be prepared for what comes our way. Questions on any on entry?
You got to put the next one on. There you go. Doug did make you smile, and I would like to apologize for that. I apologize.
Yeah.
There you go. Made you smile. There you go. Okay, thank you.
You know, my thoughts on all this, and I shared with the press release and on social media about it. And, you know, since we started this testing odyssey that we've fallen in love with testing, which parts of it are very useful, but there are parts of it are, can be very misleading. We have tried as a district to focus around growth that is bounded by the state averages. And I think there's some of that in this. I've never been a fan of the bell curve. As a teacher, I never used the bell curve in my classroom. It predisposes someone to As and predisposes someone to Fs regardless of their score. And I was in a meeting where the, this topic came up in a room full of superintendents, and a scenario was presented that I had not even considered. We have in our state enterprise schools and magnet schools. The enterprise schools are typically elementaries that people can apply for their children to be in, and they are public schools. Oklahoma City Public Schools has enterprise schools. We all know of magnet schools, either in Oklahoma City Public Schools or in Tulsa Public Schools, and where families make application, and there's an admission process. Those schools are all included in this. And those schools, when they get an A, because largely because they were able to select their student population, what happens to the next school that's on the border of an A or a B? And the next school that's on the border of a B or a C? That is why I'm not a fan of the bell curve, among other reasons. Then, looking at ourselves. Obviously, we don't want a seventy-three percent graduation rate. We want something better. We want improvement, and we're going to continue to strive toward improvement. But one of the things, as I alluded to in my comments earlier when this first came out, if you look at the chronic absenteeism, and as a, as a more experienced educator than I'd like to be sometimes, you look at that and you realize that chronic absenteeism, when you dig into those, those students' lives, they are in many cases predisposed to not being a high school graduate. And so, these habits are formed early. And that's why we have been working very hard with our district attorney to work on the chronic absenteeism, change the behavior before they get to Guthrie High School so that they're not a dropout. And I think that's what we have to continue to strive to. And that is a community thing. Getting your kids to school is a community thing. And I don't think there's any way that you can say chronic absenteeism and graduation do not go hand in hand. And so, that is something as a community, we need to work on. And it's going to take more than just the principals, meeting with parents, it's going to take more than just the district attorney filing charges, it's going to take a community working together. And so, that's where, looking at all of this, as I said in my remarks right after these came out, there are some bright spots. The growth at Gess, the work at the junior high, that's a sign of good things. And we know from our state testing, when we, from our third grade reading as a decent indicator, from third grade until sixth grade, we're doing a great job of growing those kids academically. And we need to continue that momentum, but we also, along the road, we can't, we can't teach them if they're not in school. And so, those are my thoughts on, on all of this. This is one piece to the puzzle that we use to try and dictate what we do in the classroom. It's not the whole piece, and I can assure you, we are, I know every principal wants better for their kids than what they have right now and they're working on. And this maybe is a way to examine the resources that were provided and look at, do we need to shuffle that a little bit to some areas that maybe need more resources as well?
I've got a question. Ms. Lagran, do you feel like your teachers, when they do take kids out on activities, that that list gets complete? That, because just from experience, I know that there's been times when, when the boys and I would travel to Shosheep out of state, and we might be the only one, you know, we'd have to call back in and say, you know, we're traveling, even though the teachers didn't go with us. Do you feel like that there could be, be a few of these absences in here that are counting that really shouldn't because of the list from teachers to excuse that child?
No, I think that's pretty accurate. We've done a lot better job the last couple of years. In fact, we've even found that career tech allows a lot more of these ad contests to actually be considered state qualifiers that do not count against their activity. Because they're really almost just beyond ten As a year back for activities, and you can appeal for up to five more. But if it's a state qualifying event like regionals and state, that's not included in that, that number of ten. And so, we've actually cleaned up a lot of those activities that were counted against some of those ad kids because they were actually state qualifying events, so.
So, you feel like your teachers do provide you with an accurate list, wouldn't it? Do you go to the state and national qualifying?
Yes, much better. It's been really good the last year and a half. It's been really good the last year and a half.
Okay, any other discussion? We'll move to Agenda Item 11, the Consent Agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Mr. President, I move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Davis.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Medley.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Flag.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
7908.
Agenda Item 12A, Recommendation, Consideration, and Action Upon Contract Renewal With Municipal Accounting Systems, Inc. For Providing Software and Support for Financial Accounting Personnel, Child Nutrition, and Student Information Programs Including Student Grade Books.
This is an annual renewal with the software vendor that we utilize for all of the services.
I move we approve the contract with Municipal Accounting Systems, Inc.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Davis.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Medley.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Flag.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
7908.
Agenda Item 12B, Recommendation, Consideration, and Action Upon Request For Special Education Students To Attend State Special Olympics Summer Games, May 15th through the 17th, 2019.
Second.
There's a motion, and the second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Davis.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Medley.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Flag.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
7908.
Agenda Item 12C, Recommendation, Consideration, and Action Upon K-8 Remedial Summer School Program.
We are required annually to get approval from the board to continue this summer school program. It's paid for through title funds, and we need approval.
I make a motion, we approve the K-8 Remedial Summer School Program. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Davis.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Medley.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Flag.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
7908.
Agenda Item 13, is a proposed executive session for the purpose of discussing employment of personnel. FMLA request, resignation, separation from employment, and transfer of position request. All is set out on the personnel reports. Discussion of extra duty assignments is listed for 2018 to 2019. Discussion of all building-level administrators' contracts is listed for 2019 to 2020. Periodic annual evaluation in terms of employment of Dr. Michael Simpson, Superintendent of Schools. Disclosure of which information would violate confidentiality requirements of state and/or federal law. All pursuant to 25 Oklahoma Statute, Section 307(b)(1)(7). Do we have a motion to?
I make a motion that we go into executive session. Second.
Roll call, please.
Davis.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Medley.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Flag.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
7908.
Agenda Item 15, Action Upon Recommendation Of Extra Duty Assignments Is Listed For 2018 to 2019.
I make a motion, we approve the extra duty assignments for 2018, 2019 as listed. Second.
Roll call, please.
Davis.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Medley.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Flag.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
7908.
Agenda Item 16, Recommendation, Consideration, and Action Upon Building Level Administrators' Contracts Is Listed For 2019 to 2020 Without Specification For Salary Or Assignment. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the building-level administrators' contracts as listed for 2019, 2020 without specification for salary or assignment. Second.
Roll call, please.
Davis.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Medley.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Flag.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
7908.
Agenda Item 17, Recommendation, Consideration, and Action To Accept Any Resignations Offered Since The Posting Of The Agenda. We have. Agenda Item 18, Discussion Of Possible Action On New Business Not Known About Or Could Not Have Been Reasonably Foreseen At The Time Of The Agenda Posting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. President, I move we adjourn. We both do. Second.
Roll call.
Davis.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Medley.
Yes.
Pearson.